Hey, well, by our clock in this room and by our clocks on our computer, it is past six o'clock. And so I am calling to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville. It is Tuesday, January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, and we are in the council chambers. We'll start tonight with roll call.
Eileen Nichols. Kathy Cop?
Here.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Here.
Todd Casper?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Ken Killian is excused.
Okay, the first thing on our agenda tonight is consideration of the consent agenda. Uh, the following items may approve be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature. Please let me know if you want separate discussion and action on any of these items. Uh, first, we have the council minutes from January tenth, the regular meeting, payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions, and tonight I am appointing Chuck Bonin and Samantha Staskel to partial terms on the Commission on Aging, terms to expire July one of this year, and to the Board of Appeals zoning Karen Lynch for a partial term entering ending October first, two thousand and twenty-three, and John Zulki as an alternate with a term ending October first, two thousand and twenty-four. Additionally, we have a run-walk permit from Southwest Health. Uh, this would take place, uh, not pardon me, Southwest Health Nursing. This would be taking place on Saturday, May sixth, uh, from two to four P M.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda as presented. Candace will vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
And Mr. Killian. I did.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, next on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. Sure, I would like to just announce that on February the sixteenth, uh, will be the Platteville Regional Chamber's annual celebration. Um, and that will be taking place at the Belmont Convention Center, um, beginning at five P M. And you can get your tickets by, uh, calling, um, the chamber or emailing the chamber. And I also have a poster here if anybody would look to like to look at it after the meeting. And we had, uh, one person in our audience tonight register to speak at this time, and so, um, Ms. Day, I would call on you.
So I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself. And if I were speaking to the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals, you'd have a green light and a red light telling me when to start and when to stop. But I promise I won't take more. I won't take more than a few minutes. Uh, my name is Jennifer Day, and I am running for Grant County Circuit Court Judge. I've been trying to get out a bit door to door and meet people, but this is an excellent opportunity for you to maybe connect a person to what you might read in the paper or talk about. Little bit of background, I grew up in Whitewater. My father taught economics at the university. My mom worked at the Department of Housing and Urban Development in Madison. I went to undergraduate at U W Madison and Law School at Washington University School of Law in St. Louis. I went on a full-ride scholarship, so they apparently thought I was pretty bright. Kind of struggled the first year, as I maybe indicated to some. I I found the Budweiser Brewery down in St. Louis, and I'm a Wisconsin girl, so I struggled a bit, but I got back on track my second year. And I graduated in the top eleven percent of my law school class. Uh, returned to the Walworth County, Jefferson County area to practice law. So for fourteen years, I was in private practice in that, uh, southeast area of the state. I did everything, so criminal defense, both state and federal level, uh, civil law, lots of family law, lots of juvenile law. I've done appellate work. I've appeared in front of the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals, which is extremely intimidating. Uh, bankruptcy, you name it, I did a lot of things as a private practitioner. In about two thousand and three, Jefferson County hired me to be a halftime court commissioner and halftime guardian ad litem. So the guardian ad litem component was to represent all children in the child abuse or neglect cases and in the termination of parental rights cases. So for Jefferson County, I had wore that hat and a court commissioner hat for three years. Uh, really enjoyed the guardian ad litem work. I enjoyed working with the children and trying to help the families out as best I could. In two thousand and six, they made me a full-time circuit court commissioner. Jefferson County, that's a little different than Grant County. As a circuit court commissioner, you basically do anything the judge wants to do. So I did a lot of small claims work, a lot of criminal work. I did all of their, uh, domestic abuse and harassment injunctions, a ton of family court work. Uh, so I have that then sort of six years of circuit court commissioner work. And then in two thousand and eight, I was elected to the to be the Fort Atkinson City Municipal Court Judge. When I ran for that job, I made it pretty clear to everybody that if a circuit court position opened up, I was going to run for circuit court judge. And and we were talking, uh, Judge Alsvik retired in two thousand and nine. So I ran for his seat and was elected in two thousand and nine. And I served there until two thousand and eighteen, when I married Judge Craig Day. And you have to live in the county in which you are elected. So I chose, we chose that he would continue to work out here, and we would both live out here and move out here. Uh, beautiful, beautiful county. I am delighted to be here. We have a beautiful forty acres of land. I wake up every morning and and I feel blessed by what we have out here, but I am not from around here. Uh, so I understand that that's a big deal out here is this family and friends and connections. I I lack those. So what I'm running on basically is my proven excellence and my experience. So I have a ton of experience. And if you look at my website, I have a lot of testimonials from people who will tell you how very, very good I was as a judge. It's hard for me to say that out loud. I'm not one of those people that talk about myself a lot. Um, but I really was a good judge. I would love to be able to give that to the people of Grant County, the same way I gave it to the people of Jefferson County. Uh, my two opponents are, well, there's they're both local here, so I'm sure you know them both. Uh, their primary area of law is criminal. I've done a lot of criminal. I'm very experienced at that. Uh, I looked at sort of the stats, and there are about four hundred criminal cases and about three hundred and twenty family, civil, small claims, juvenile kind of compilation of cases. Uh, so where I come in is I I could really just jump in and hit the ground running. I filled in for Judge Van De Hee on Monday when he was he was out and handled that pretty well, I think. People are concerned, and I guess I've I've not heard the specific concerns, but about having two days in the courthouse and being the two judges. If it's a concern about power, I would say that power has really never been a thing for me. It's always been about the job and doing the best job I can for the people. Uh, if it's about how he and I get along, uh, we get along great. Uh, we'd be on different floors. We wouldn't probably talk to each other much during the day. Uh, I don't imagine any fights breaking out between the two of us. If it's about judicial independence, I asked Judge Hugh, who was a long-serving judge in Jefferson County, to give me a testimonial to sort of let people know, um, about that. And his comment was in the testimonial that I am fiercely independent. So I am not at all concerned, and I would hope you wouldn't be concerned that I would just do whatever Craig would want me to do. In fact, you know, we we have a very different view of our cases. We've certainly have communicated about them when I was a judge at Jefferson, and he was a judge out here. Uh, so we've done this a little bit. He's very intelligent, and if I need to find case law, I will certainly run to him, and he'll find it in an instant. Uh, but applying the facts to that to that case law would be something that I would do independent of anything that he would think. So if there are any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to answer them.
And we and we don't generally do that during comments, but, uh, Jennifer has left her information and on your, uh, uh, desk and on the chairs. Uh, so I'm confident that if anybody has a question, Jennifer, that they will email you at your agenda judge at gmail dot com.
Check out the website and don't forget to vote on February twenty-first, regardless of who you vote for. Just make sure you do it.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any council member that has anything they want to talk about at this time?
I will just add that, um, the museum is once again selling pasty if you've run out, as I almost have. Um, go on their website. They're doing, um, mostly online sales this time, but if you know somebody like me who also is available for you to sign up, contact me.
Any other? Otherwise, I would, uh, I would, uh, at this time note that Howard was contacted by a special agency out of Washington, D.C. Uh, about our lead service line replacement program. And, uh, um, while he isn't in Washington, D.C., making a presentation, because it's a very costly endeavor to spend thirty seconds saying, yes, we have this program. Uh, it it is worth noting that, um, there was this recognition of the efforts that we have made in Platteville for lead service line replacement, and we have Howard to thank for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we will now move on, uh, to the reports. Uh, there were several reports in your packet. There was the Tourism Committee report. Lynn, anything to add?
No, there was something to add, but I think I was, uh, you're gonna talk, that's why I'm gonna talk about it, right? No, no, am I in? I'll say no.
Okay. How about the Housing Authority Board? How about the Library Board?
No.
How about water and sewer? Ken?
No additions on my part.
Have we, uh, noted here that we are in the, uh, throes of a search for a water and sewer?
Utility superintendent.
Utility superintendent, right. Um, so, uh, if you know anyone with the credentials to be a water and sewer utility superintendent, I'm sure we would be more than happy to hear about it. Community safe threats, Jason?
Um, nothing to add.
Okay, well, that's the reports in the, uh, that were in our packet. Let's move then on to action items. The first action item on the agenda tonight is ordinance twenty-two oh-one adding adding street parking Chestnut Street. Joe?
Yes, this is a proposal regarding that first block of Chestnut Street just south of Main Street. Um, this idea, uh, came about, uh, when we were working, uh, actually with Eila, uh, W D C, um, regarding a grant application to support the Updraft Brewery Project. And, uh, the way that grant is structured, and by the way, that is a agenda item later tonight. Uh, but they really look for, uh, community projects where the community is involved in the project in some form or fashion. Uh, typically, that's, uh, financially. Uh, unfortunately, the the Tiff District, downtown Tiff District, is not really in a position to provide any financial support, and the city doesn't really have any funds available to, uh, provide support to that project financially. So we were brainstorming, uh, how we could, uh, do some other activities to help support that project. And so Eila suggested looking at, you know, parking as a means of providing additional street parking to benefit the the business in that way, uh, along with the previous action the council took of, uh, discontinuing part of Jones Street that together at least sends a signal that we're doing what we can to support that project. Um, so the project itself would be to add some additional parking spaces on that first block of, uh, Chestnut Street, south of Main Street. Um, so it would be three spaces added on the east side of Main Street, basically adjacent to the Steve's Pizza Building, and then additional two spaces on the west side of, uh, Chestnut Street, uh, next to the Holiday Inn Express. So some concerns or discussion points when this went to the Plan Commission was concerns about, uh, the visibility, especially traffic exiting onto Chestnut Street from that alley. Uh, the southernmost point of that, uh, first parking space would be ninety feet north of there. So there really shouldn't be any issues with visibility, plus the traffic coming south is going to be in the other lane. So the sight distance would be beyond ninety feet. Um, that first space would be also be north of the curb cut where that parking, uh, currently extends into, uh, basically where the the pizza delivery drivers park next to the Steve's Pizza Kitchen area. So there'd be no impact on that. Uh, the two spaces on the west side would be added south of the existing four spaces, and there would still be, uh, additional thirty-two feet remaining between that southernmost parking space and where that taper, that restricted taper starts in the street. So there should be no impact on, uh, maneuvering, uh, trucks in that area. Um, the proposal actually, when it went to the Plan Commission, had had an additional space, uh, on the east side. Uh, but there were some concerns about larger trucks turning onto Main Street. So the decision was made to leave that, uh, one out. Um, so there's still adequate maneuvering space, uh, for vehicles turning onto Main Street. So that's how we ended up with the three on the east side and two on the west side. Um, the ordinance, uh, in your packet has a draft, um, uh, where the restrictions for that would be the no parking three A M. to six A M. and three hour parking from nine A M. to five thirty, five thirty P M., which is a kind of the standard restrictions for parking spaces in the downtown area. So that would be the proposal. If the council wants to do anything other than that, um, that should be part of your, uh, motion if you are in this proposal. Otherwise, the Plan Commission did recommend approval, and staff also recommends approval. Any questions?
Okay, questions from council members?
I did hear some concern from people that they thought that maybe in the middle of the winter, when we get some of these winters where we have a heavy snowfall, and it's hard to remove the snow from the side of the street, that this would cause some congestion that didn't allow for for people to park properly, for proper removal of snow. And my thought of this was if we could add to this ordinance that when the city deemed it necessary, that they could shut down these three spots, and I'm talking about snow emergencies, and other times we start getting one of these hundred-inch snowfall years, that they could shut down these three spots during the evening or something to remove snow, or that they have the discretion to do so, I guess, and have them open the rest of the year. I could see no reason not to have them open in July, August, September, the rest of the year. I'm just saying when perhaps the city would need it. They close them down for a snow issue.
Todd, would you, uh, right now, the recommendation is three A M. to six A M. What if that was were moved to one A M. to six A M.?
Sure, and I I'm just thinking if we have a heavy snowfall that begins at night, and it starts causing a congestion issue because people don't park up to snowbanks. They usually stay two or three feet away. I guess, so I was just hoping for some sort of latitude, some sort of ability, some sort of discretion. Um, I know that's probably not the easiest thing to word.
Well, the easiest change would be to change three A M. to six A M. to one A M. to six A M., which would give you the majority of the night.
That would, that would work also. Uh, I I fully understand, and and, you know, um, my my folks were concerned about the fact that when you have a plow with a wing, you'd have to fold up the wing uh, in order to to pass through there. Um, but we have parking allowed on both sides of the street up north of there. Um, this is more of the business area, but it is possible for people to park on both sides up above here, and there's no difference. We've had no difference, no issues there. Um, so whatever is, whatever is your pleasure, it's just that, you know, we we chose three to six because that matches the rest of downtown. But if you feel it necessary to do that, plus I believe that, you know, we do have, we do have authority to put temporary no parking, uh, for street maintenance and those sorts of things as necessary.
Yeah, yeah, it's if you have that ability already, then I, then you have the remedy if something goes wrong, I guess. It would probably be sufficient. Thank you, though.
Any other questions? John, did you want to speak on the parking here? Or are you here for the second item on our? Okay. Ken?
I have a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, on, um, Chestnut, the addition of two parking spaces, I I measured the size of the parking spaces. Uh, there are eighteen at the beginning, about twenty-two, twenty-two, and eighteen. So when you add on the two, are you going to add on to eighteen? Are you going to make the eighteen or twenty-two? And do it like that? That's a question for one of you, too.
That that's for me. Um, standard, standard parking stalls are twenty-two feet for for an interior parking stall to allow people to maneuver in and out. Eighteen on the ends because they can either back in or pull out. So what we would do is, is that last stall would be extended to, uh, twenty-two feet. Then we have one twenty-two foot and then an eighteen footer.
Okay, then my next, uh, questions are about the, um, east side. And somewhere it says, um, that the first parking stall on the east side going to be south is how many feet from the crosswalk? Which is there next to Main Street?
Um, I put on there.
Number fifty feet?
I put on there approximately fifty feet. The idea was to be to, uh, match the, uh, um, the second stall on the west side.
Okay, and then, um, when I look at, uh, excuse me, looking at the painting, uh, the start of the painting on the east side, is that going to be striped like it is striped in front of the, uh, library?
It would be, uh, it would be similar to the to the parking stall markings on on the west side, yes.
It'd be similar to what's in front of the library. The library has has no, no markings for dividing up parking stalls. That's on the main street part, and then it, uh, has a white line. That's the line in which they must park, and then there's the, um, handicap parking, uh, notation there. And so, uh, then at the end, there's going to be about four or five lines, and you're going to do the same thing here on Chestnut Street?
No, we would, we would mimic what's on the west side. We we would just mirror what's on the west side.
But when I, when I take a look at what was done over on Main Street.
Yeah, you're speaking of Main Street, and I'm I'm saying that that our our intent would be to mirror what's on the west side, not do what we did on Main Street.
Well, I got the idea that you put the lines in to ensure that people would pull over to the left on Main Street before they tried to make a right-hand turn, which is what you're doing here. If some people want to make a right-hand turn, then they have to have good notice that that they have to make a right-hand turn with the lines.
Are you suggesting that we should, uh, paint diagonal lines?
Well, I just, I thought that there is similarity between what you're doing on Main and what you're doing on Chestnut. But now you're telling me that you just want to do the same thing you're doing on on the west side. So then, uh, so this, um, so that's, that's one general comment area. Next is, um, the length of these parking spaces, uh, one, two, and three, is the first one eighteen feet or twenty-two feet? I couldn't tell.
Should have been eighteen. Well, on which side of the road, Ken?
On the east side. This is the first parking stall that's, uh, put there. Is that going to be eighteen-foot stall or twenty-two? Is the next, next one an eighteen or is it a twenty-two?
The interior.
And the next one is a twenty-two.
The next one would be eighteen because it's an exterior. It has exterior exit. So eighteen, twenty-two, and eighteen.
Okay, I couldn't tell for sure. Okay, then what what's bothersome to me is, um, being able to see people with these three vehicles that may be parked there. So when I think about downtown and trying to cross Main Street downtown, if we have, if we're going across Main Street and let's say we want to go, go to the left at the corner, there may be a truck or there may be a large van. And so to see around those things, you have to pull out in front of them to see them, to see up the street. And so I I'm bothered by this situation here that can you really do that here? Because when you're down, you're coming out of the Hartig's, uh, drive-up there. Um, where where you're, where are you going to be stopped at? In in order to be able to look up this street, pass, let's put in three vehicles, pass three vehicles, and see what's up here in a corner as far as other cars coming toward you.
So Ken, are you trying to describe you're coming out of the Hartig Drive-Thru? And you want to turn left?
I want to turn.
South, left?
Left, and so I can see the people on the left. But what I'm getting at is how well can I see the people on the right?
Especially if there's a couple of semis who have been stopped at the corner and who may be waiting because people are turning left from Chestnut onto West Main Street, and so you may have sight issues. I think that's what you're trying to describe.
Well, yes, you could have, you could have semis up here at at the stop sign, so you don't know.
Question, and I guess another issue, that scenario can happen anywhere.
Right.
And then it's your responsibility as a driver to wait until you can ascertain whether you have a a clear area to go.
Well, but then you then you, to me, you're still, you're getting down here where you you may say to yourself, well, I think I'll pull out here far enough so I can see past to these three vehicles here and see up the street. Now, that's what I find to be a a problem.
I think that's very similar to.
And also also, to me, the issue is downtown, I believe. At one time, we passed an ordinance saying that there can't be any pickups parking at the corners of these intersections. Is that still in effect?
You're talking about Fourth Street at Main when?
Yes.
When they redid Main Street.
So we have to get out in front of those vehicles to look up the Main Street to see what's there. So you're saying, uh, the chief is shaking his head no, saying we do nothing about it, or we don't? We don't carry out, in other words, we don't carry out that particular ordinance?
I didn't know that there was an ordinance about that in the downtown. I know that there.
But that was, was something that was handled years years ago. Is it still in effect?
I think we're referencing when we redid Main Street, uh, at Fourth and Main, there were parking spots that were designated for small vehicles, not S U Vs, not pickup trucks. Uh, the person at the time who owned the coffee shop complained about that, and eventually that restriction was removed. So it does tend to lend itself that you might have to take an extra twenty-five to thirty seconds and be careful at the intersection. Um, but this other one you're talking about here, Ken, looks like there's ninety feet of ninety feet of of ability to see north on Chestnut. I, you know, that's all I.
Well, I'm just, as far as going out and looking at this, did you actually go out and try it and look up the street with vehicles parked up here and see what you could see as far as at the intersection? Did you test it that way?
Actually, I did, yes. And there's plenty of distance, because like I said, it's ninety feet to the parking space, but the traffic coming south is in the other lane. So you can see another twenty feet at least before you see the vehicle. So you can see another twenty feet at least before you see the vehicle. That's more than you're gonna see in most intersections.
I think, okay, then the other thing that I find bothersome here is the amount of parking that Steve Pizza has already. Steve Pizza has parking signage. Is that, that's gonna go all the way from Main Street up to the Uptraft Brewery, correct?
But it isn't parking, Ken, for Steve's Pizza. It's parking in the downtown and it can be used by people who are visiting the library. It could be used by people who are going to Community First Bank. It could be used by people who are going to the hairdresser, barbershop rock, the Holiday Inn, the Uptraft. It could be used by any of these people. It's not designated parking.
The, the signs are up for Steve's Pizza.
It's in their own private parking.
Within their private parking lot, right.
Yeah, there's
They, they own that land.
Along this whole distance here, they have signs up for Steve's Pizza. On the other side, they have signs up for Steve's and also this small building along there. And so could I go over there and park there? If I didn't go, if I didn't go into Steve Pizza, could anybody go and park there?
Right. I don't think there's a, there's no signage on Main, on Chestnut Street. On the west side of, on the, yeah, west side of Chestnut Street, that says parking for Steve's Pizza.
I'm talking about the interior Jones going that street.
Oh, well, that's their property.
So that means that nobody can park on their spots.
Right, just like nobody can park in your yard.
So it seems to me they have a lot of parking available without the city having to uh give more parking out here.
All right, anybody else with questions? Kathy?
Um, how, as long as we're talking about, I'm looking at the, the three spaces on the east side. I know that that, can you confirm, is it an official turn lane when you're going north on Chestnut to turn onto Main Street?
No, it is not.
It is not. So that's always bothered me when I come up that way. Because I do not use, even though it's quite wide, I don't use that to turn right, but there's been times where I've caught cars coming up beside me to turn and I'm turning. Would this be an opportunity to crosshatch that section north of that proposed third parking spot that would indicate, I mean, you're not gonna drive over a crosshatch. I mean, I mean, people will, I'm just thinking that I came really close one time to being clipped.
Uh, Kathy, I believe that that's what Ken had asked for. He had just asked for the diagonal.
I bet he was talking about the part by the library.
No, he was comparing it to the, the, if you're coming west on Main, from West Main Street East, when you get to the stoplight, there isn't a right turn lane there either to turn onto Chestnut. And that, for that first, I don't know how many feet, has diagonal lines through it on Main Street. And I think Ken just asked for that to be considered for Chestnut Street, just like we're asking.
Okay.
You're, you're talking about the same thing.
Okay, I was thinking you were talking about the library.
Well, he was talking about that spot by the library.
Okay, that's, that's my only comment. Okay.
So I think we've heard crosshatching or well, whatever, diagonal line there. Anybody else? It's Lynn's turn.
I was just concerned um if, um based on what I'm hearing, if there had, if that's like a serious hazardous corner, like have there been accidents and clippings and that kind of stuff? Like, we're, we are of course, looking at and evaluating it, but has there been any history of the, that happening? Or it's just, we're just being preliminary cautious?
It's a highly trafficked area. You're gonna have some areas of friction and some accidents. I don't think it's been out of the ordinary, given the amount of traffic we see through there.
Any after questions? Ken?
Well, I just wanna reiterate my uh previous part there that if you have three vehicles along there and today we have vans, which are very tall and vans which have dark windows and you can't see through them. We have pickups you can't see through. So if you have large vehicles along there, three of them parked there, that's gonna make it to be more difficult to see past that area. So there's nothing being said about the size of vehicle that can park there. As far as pickups, vans, there's no, no mention whatsoever.
That's correct. There is no mention whatsoever in the current uh text. Uh, any other questions? This is a, a action item tonight, so if anybody has action they would like to propose?
I have a motion.
Okay, Todd.
Motion to approve an ordinance uh twenty-three dash zero-two amending the street parking regulations on Bailey Avenue, Court Street.
Uh, just a minute, you're on the wrong one.
Wrong one. I'll get to that one next. About that. I'm sorry. Motion to approve ordinance twenty-three oh one, addition of five parking spots or spaces rather on Chestnut Street between Main Street and Pine Street as proposed.
Backing in.
Okay, we have a motion by Todd and a second by Lynn to approve ordinance twenty-three oh one as presented, adding five parking spaces on Chestnut between Main and Pine Streets as proposed. And, and I would note that uh if these parking spots present a problem, it's just as easy to remove them as it is to add them. And I would expect that our staff will be watching closely if this creates a problem. Candace?
Nichols?
Epstein?
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, the second item on our agenda tonight then is uh, uh, another parking situation. Street parking regulations for Bailey Avenue, Court Street and Roundtree Avenue. Joe?
Uh, yes, thank you. So this uh issue came about uh due to some concerns uh raised by some of the residents in that area just south of downtown, uh specifically living on Roundtree Avenue and Bailey Avenue. Um, due to the amount of vehicles parking in that area and the time span that some of those vehicles were parked uh on those blocks. And so staff looked at it and I think the, kind of the main issue that came up is there are a couple of sections within that first block south of Pine Street on Roundtree and Court Street that are not designated. There's no signage regarding parking. So by ordinance, that automatically means that it's supposed to be forty-eight hour parking, but I think since it designated as anything specific, I think the people that park there just don't recognize that. They don't understand what the rules are, so they have a tendency to park there for a long period of time. Um, that's the dismay of some of those residents. Um, and then some of the residents on Bailey Avenue had some concerns because of the the timeframe when some of the vehicles parked there, specifically those businesses where the employees uh parked there basically all day. And they had some concerns about that, uh if they have visitors and just the fact that um it kind of looks like a parking lot in front of their, their house. So they had requested some changes to be made uh in that area. Um, so after consulting with the planning commission, they had some ideas, uh staff did make some proposals for some changes. Um, so basically on Roundtree Avenue, that first section just south of, of uh Pine Street uh be three to four vehicles that could park there. Um, uh, be designated as no parking three to six AM. And then the uh west side of uh Roundtree Avenue, a little bit further south within that first block would be no parking three to six AM and recommendation for three-hour parking. Uh, Bailey Avenue, which is currently no parking three to six AM, uh would be modified a little bit. That first section uh on the east side next to the Mount City Bank would remain no parking three to six AM. The rest of that first block would still be no parking to three to six AM, but would also have a restriction for a maximum of three-hour parking. And then that west side of Court Street on that first block, which currently doesn't have a distinction, would also be no parking three to six AM. Um, I would point out that in your packet, we do have two options for the actual uh ordinance. Uh, the residents uh who raised this issue basically are in favor of these changes, although it would be their preference for uh a slight modification. Instead of the maximum three-hour parking, they would like to see maximum two-hour parking. So in your order, in your packet, we do have two versions of that ordinance. Uh, basically, it's the same designation except one of them has a maximum three-hour parking, the other one has a maximum two-hour parking. Um, so as I mentioned, this did go to the planning commission. The planning commission did recommend approval of the changes when it was presented to them. It was a three-hour parking. So that was their recommendation. Um, staff is in favor and I don't know if we have a strong preference either way between the two-hour version or the three-hour version, but we would be in favor of the changes being made. Any questions?
Questions? Any questions here? I, I've had several calls this weekend or emails from residents in this area of Roundtree, Bailey and Roundtree and Bailey who point out that uh one block farther south, it is two-hour parking. Uh, it's permit parking and two-hour parking. So um they're uh, they're so I would favor, I would favor the two-hour parking uh designation in that uh it maintains uh similar requirements uh south of Pine Street. Any other?
No. Anybody wanna speak? Okay, I would also favor two hours. Um, Ruth Jones came in here and her request at two meetings was that she preferred a two-hour parking limit and not the three-hour limit. So and I look at this situation that the residential people are still carrying some of the burden as far as providing parking for people that are living downtown. And um those people need to be providing their own parking and not parking being provided by residential in the area. So even though it's uh two hours, it's not permit parking as such. And so there's still a burden. Initially, I thought that area was set up to be permit parking. That was back in twenty-eleven when this started. But somehow that got changed over to um this do, this other system. And then finally, what do we go to? Going through this overnight parking situation. And it doesn't, doesn't help people very much as far as people being invited into your place if you have people parking there that uh live downtown or come in from another area and use your parking spaces. So anyway, uh, the bank uh is what, what initiated this situation? Cause she saw a lot of the people from the bank parking there and the bank has to be responsible for its own getting, getting a parking.
Okay, anybody else with any comments? I, I favor two hour, but I will, I won't oppose three either. So it's really up to whoever makes the motion.
I move if we adopt option two.
Second.
Okay, the, the motion is to adopt option two, which is two-hour parking. So uh Roundtree Avenue, I'm not gonna read it all, but uh it would be restricting parking, uh no parking three AM to six AM. And then in the part, places where there is parking unrestricted during the day, it would be a two-hour limit. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. So Candace will vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item and last item for action on our agenda tonight then is the twenty-twenty-three city goals. And Nicola?
Sure. So um, the twenty-twenty-three city of Platteville uh goals, action steps were established by former city manager Adam Weckel out of the community value success factors, which were themselves created during the strategic planning process for the twenty-twenty-one through twenty-three strategic plan. Um, and so wh-what you see in your packet is the goals that have been outlined. They fall into three categories, which um are the community value success factors, safe welcoming and engaged community, thoughtful development and prosperous economy, and quality infrastructure amenities and services. I'm not gonna read through them all tonight. Um, Adam did read them the last time. Uh, but that is what's before you for uh adoption tonight.
Okay, anybody questions?
Just, I think I know the answer to this, but these are not in order of importance, correct?
No.
They're, okay.
Not that I'm aware of. They are, are just um grouped underneath each of those categories.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I would take a motion. I move to adopt the twenty-twenty-three city of Platteville city goals.
Very good.
We have a motion in a second to adopt the city goal action steps for twenty-twenty-three as presented. Candace will vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, we'll move into the information and discussion portion of our agenda. And tonight, uh, we have a resolution for a community development investment grant for the Uptraft Brewery. Joe?
Yeah, so thi- this is the grant that I mentioned uh earlier uh this evening, but um John Patacos would be the uh uh property owner for that project. Uh, but the property at forty-five South Chestnut has been vacant for several years. He's in the process of converting that to the Uptraft Brewery and is looking for uh other sources of uh financial assistance to help with that project. And so he's been working with Eila Kakadeh from W E D C and the city on uh this potential application uh community development investment grant. Um, so the way that, that grant program is structured is, it's uh, well, first of all, the program's to benefit projects in downtown areas. Uh, historic preservation, renovation or development projects that would have the ability to benefit the overall community, speci- specifically the downtown area. Um, so this project would qualify for that. Uh, the grant program is for projects or awards up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. They can approve projects for less than that, depending on the scale of the project and the perceived benefits to the community. Um, but the way it's structured is that the applicant technically is the city. And then the city uh would obtain the grant and then provide the funds to the applicant or the business owner as part of the project. So it's really a pass-through grant, if you would, um, which we have done these before. We did this exact program um as part of the Ruxton uh development project uh back in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, I think it was approved. Um, so we would have a, a development agreement, which I have a draft in the packet where we would have an agreement with uh the applicant, the guarding the fund. So they would do the project, submit uh reimbursement request to the city based on the work that's completed. We would then turn around and turn, return those uh that information to W E D C, get reimbursed, and then we would pay the applicant from those funds. So it is completely set up as a reimbursement. So the city is not out funds. We don't have to front the funds. Um, they do the work and then get reimbursed through W E D C. Um, so as I mentioned, um uh, it, it really is functioning as a pass-through grant. Um, I have some additional information in the packet uh as far as the program itself. Um, I think Eila said they have a, kind of a preliminary review, I think was supposed to be today. So we should have some additional information before the next meeting, whether it looks favorable or not. Obviously, if it's not funded, we will not proceed any further. Um, but if it is at the next meeting, we would request approval of this uh grant application. Any questions?
Uh, John, yeah, John Patacos is here and is the owner and has uh registered to speak. So John, you can come to the podium.
My name is John Patacos from Updraft Brewery. And I didn't prepare a speech, so I, I figured if you guys would ask me questions, I could answer them for you, maybe.
All right, so then now we have John at the podium who is the owner and we have Joe and so now we'll have council questions. Anybody with questions?
That's my turn, I like to have a question.
Okay, uh first of all. Receipt of these funds would be. Uh, to the city, is the city required to make any match, Joe?
No, the applicant or the, the project owner in this case would be. Me- meeting, coming up with the funds to meet the required match. So they have it set up apparently in different counties, it's a little bit different, some areas it's a three to one match, but Grant County meets the. Threshold of the requirement where we qualify for a one to one match. So it's a little bit easier to do that.
Uh, because I, I saw it said grant recipient and if we're applying that we would be the grant recipient, right? Must provide a minimum. Matching investment.
So then we have a development agreement with. Project owner to provide the.
To provide that. Has the development agreement been developed?
So yeah, actually W E D C provides the draft agreement. Um, so if you want to make some changes to that, um, I, I'm assuming we can. But as long as it's not contrary to the uh requirements of the grant. But I know the last time we did this, it was basically just fill in the blanks as far as. Making it, you know, city of Platteville in this particular project and then that's the agreement we went with.
And what is the amount of the grant that's going to be applied for?
I, well, I said it, it, the grant's up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars, I haven't seen the final numbers.
Yes, it would be two fifty.
Two fifty.
Fifty, and then there is, that's the, that's one granted, i- in the grant application, it talks about vibrant spaces, is there also a grant application for that?
That's a.
Or is that part of?
Kind of a si- related program under W E D C, uh but it's not technically the community development investment. Uh, program and I believe uh. Museum is working on a. Vibrant spaces grant.
What's that question, John? When do you expect to have it up and running?
Uh, sometime in the middle to late June.
And I was just curious, you're, you and your family have been in business here in Platteville for how long?
Forty three years.
How many people do you think you've employed over those forty three years estimate? So I thought, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Ken?
I have a question, um, I'm looking back at adding street parking. And um, then looking at um. This document here. Community development investment grant. How much, where in the grant does it talk about? For example, parking. What, what, which pages should I be looking at? I got, I got, it says here four of six. So how much of this do I go through and find? The section with surprise to the city putting in some additional parking.
Uh, in the information that was provided, there, there won't be uh any mention of that, so in the application itself. There's a couple of areas where it talks about community involvement in the project. And so we put language in the application about the cities. Essentially not having the funds to help financially, so we were looking for other ways to support the project through. The closing of portion of Jones Street and working on additional. Uh, street parking in the vicinity.
So this, this document now. Do we um? Look at the whole thing or do we look at the first six pages or what do we look at? And I scanned through this and I was trying to find something on parking. And I couldn't find anything. So I was just, I was just curious about it.
Yeah, th- there is nothing regarding parking in this information.
So the actual application starts on page seventy five, is that right? Do you have? Uh, it says, it, it appears to start on page seventy five in my.
Seventy five.
That's correct. Was that correct?
Page seventy five.
I don't have a seventy five.
So page seventy five is the development agreement, that's not the application. The application itself was not included in the packet. So the, the application, so it was, it was an online application that goes directly to W E D C, so that was not included.
Okay, so the application can, isn't actually available except online. So that's why you don't see the language that Joe was referencing as to the city's uh support of the project. Because it's not in your packet, it was on a, it's in an online application. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So it's having difficulty.
Okay, other questions? Otherwise, this isn't up for action tonight, it's up for action at our meeting next week. Joe, is there a link that you can provide people to the actual application or what? Or draft or?
I, I'll have to check with you on that.
Okay. That would be great.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
And even though I don't agree with everything. My concern is. Is uh what effect it may have upon.
And, and I guess that remains to be seen.
Have any effect at all, actually it would, it would make it better. At this point, when I used to own Steve's Pizza, you know, I sold it last year. Um, when I used to own Steve's Pizza, there was a lot of issues back there with people parking too far away from the buildings. And cars couldn't get through, so they would either drive through my drive through the opposite direction. Or they would turn around and go the other direction, which we didn't want them to, it's, it's a one way. And uh, so this actually would make it better and I'm also thinking about uh leveling the building one fifty five. Uh, West Main Street. The old um, uh, what's it called? The old um.
Is that where the?
Viewpoint screen printing used to be for years, yeah, and I was using that for storage, so I was thinking about leveling that. So I can add more parking.
Is that the one next to the old State Farm?
Yes, yes.
And that?
Yes.
Doesn't fit in with the city whatsoever.
Yeah, it's, it was.
Nonhistoric.
Yeah, we were approved to level it like years ago. So I'm thinking about doing that, so that would add more parking to the area. To, it could be utilized by Steve's Pizza, I guess, and, and the brewery, because we won't, the brewery won't open until after three o'clock. If it's a good user life for lunch.
Yeah, the lady came to plant commission and also the meeting last week. And he has one parking stall back of her place. Is say that additional parking somehow could be. Put it in for a situation like that.
Life parking for somebody else on my parking lot?
If you use up. No. I'm told here well along your building, Steve's Pizza, that's your parking.
Yes, he owns that property.
Yeah, I don't own Steve's Pizza anymore, so I own the west, the east side of the, of the old Jones Street back in the seventies when it was vacated for Tom Heiser.
She, she has an alley, but that alley apparently is too, too small to go through or. Is that the situation, Joe?
Actually, she can get to her parking. I, I think he's talking about Jane's Hair Salon, Hair Studio.
Hair Salon, right.
Yeah. That's on whatever that street is, Court Street.
She's got one space to the rear for her presidential tenants.
I'm just wondering here, is there any way to get more parking?
That's all, that's all we're asking for more parking downtown, sorry, so that's why we're asking for more parking downtown, that's why I kind of said, well, we could have those. You know, four or five parking spots added on so that everybody can park back there. It's not those on parking spot in Chestnut, they're, they're not mine, they're for the public. That's why I requested that they're added, it will help all the businesses downtown there.
I understand that, I understand.
Okay, well, there is.
Talking about the inside.
I just.
It's one parking spot in the back of her building, that's the size of her building, that's her lot. I don't know how it could increase her lot.
I just wanted to, um. I love when uh people are, aren't out and they are stepping out on what I call faith, I wanted to ask you something. Probably have nothing to do with anything else. What is your, when you think about this project happening, what is your source of excitement about it? What, what are you excited about? Being with. This happened, if we, everybody approves everything, what would make you the most excited about this?
I think that it's gonna really help the downtown, uh it will bring a lot of people from um. All the tri-state area, kind of like people think of Patosi Brewery, so people head down there, it becomes a destination. They drive through their, that area in, in Patosi. They see other businesses like, oh, you know what, I didn't know this place even existed, so it won't just help. The brewery will help the whole downtown area, um, the building. After the renovation is done, it's gonna, um, of course, the, the tax revenue is gonna raise. And it's gonna create more jobs. Um, the e- equipment that's gonna go into there is worth hundreds of thousands of dollars and it will, that will be personal property taxes. So we estimate that it's gonna be at least a hundred twenty four thousand dollars to the city, state and federal government for this project and. Really, if you think about it, is that. It will div- it will help spur development downtown, because I was reading for the uh Brewers Association is that. A town. Can be judged by how much it, it's developed and how, how much it's growing by seeing if it's got a distilleries, if it's got breweries in it, that type of thing. And it brings people in that have money to spend. And that's gonna be, you know, yes, it will help Updraft Brewery, but it will also help the community, it will keep the money ro- circulating around town. It will also help because um more than half of the contractors are local. There are certain things that can't be done. And I could have gone through and I could have spent a lot less money on equipment, probably half of it. Uh, by going through Chinese. Uh, brewing equipment, but I chose um down here from Iowa, so it is American steel, American labor. So I'm big for that, uh made in America. Um, let's see. There's, there's so many things that, you know, will benefit the downtown area. And, you know, a lot of people know, you know me, I've been here for forty some years and uh I could have. I think this is a great thing for Platteville and I want to give back to Platteville what Platteville has helped me all these years. Um, I'm an immigrant. Greece here and um. I want to give back something to the America for, for helping me taking me in. I could have, I could have sold Steve's and I could have retired, I could have taken money and gone back to Greece, I could have done so many things, but that's not what I'm doing.
Alright, so that um, you know that however this decision goes, we, I, we hurt your heart, we are here, we are.
I'm doing this for Platteville, I'm not doing this for me.
And um.
I could have just said screw it, I'm done, but I don't.
Okay, Ken, one last comment.
I do want to commend you for the work you've done on your main build. As I recall, it was covered with tin at one time.
I can, I could give you guys, if you want to pass it around, what the building, the brewery looks like now, what it's gonna look like down the road. Take a moment, look at it and pass it around, front and back. And that building used to have tin all around it too, and I took that down and it's gonna get uh. Be down on the outside, it's gonna look good.
The brewery used to be Flo and Clay Restaurant one time.
Yes.
I used to go to that restaurant when I was young, young man. I had breakfast there.
Yeah.
And it's a served pancakes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, John, and uh we are at the end of our uh. Agenda for this evening, uh I would remind council members that we have some special uh meetings coming up in February. I passed out a draft schedule last time. Uh, I am confirming that February fifteenth will be a closed session. Uh, with our uh consultants for the city manager position. And we will uh meet in the police conference room, thank you Doug, and that evening on Wednesday. Uh, February fifteenth, we will be reviewing the mini resumes of our applicants and selecting some semifinalists. The second date, um.
What, what, what's the time of the fifteen?
Four thirty, these are at four thirty in the afternoon.
Four thirty?
Right, four thirty, the uh second meeting now will be that we'll talk about is Monday. February twenty seventh. Monday, February twenty seventh at four thirty again, um, in the police conference room. This will be the meeting where we look at the materials provided by the semifinalists and pick finalists. And then at this time, uh sometime during either the week of the sixth or the thirteenth. Will have um. The finalists coming to Platteville for their interviews and stuff, uh we'll see how that whole thing progresses, but it could be uh. March uh ninth and tenth, I think is a Thursday and a, uh Thursday and a Friday. Or it'll be the next week, March uh fifteenth or sixteenth. So we'll see after we get finalists, how their schedule aligns. And as you know, we bring all the finalists to Platteville on the same, at the same time. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that and make sure you have it on your uh calendar, so. Other than that, we have no business, no further business tonight. Do I hear a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Back here. Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Lynn to adjourn. Uh, Candace will vote. Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Alright.